Like call being to order. This time I'd like to stand for pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts. At this time I'd like to have a moment of silence for student loss of the day, Adam Williamson. Our thoughts are currently with his family and friends. All right, to start the regular business, I need to, in motion to amend the agenda to include consecutive session to discuss litigation in the form of the statutory and on command of the failed student. Ron, second. Jerry. All in favor? This time I'd like to, to motion to approve the amended agenda. Both Jeremy and Phil. Any discussion? All in favor? All right, this time we'll entertain public comment. If there's anybody that would like to speak. All right, this time I'll entertain forward member comments. Chair, Jeremy?
I would just like to send out condolences to Riley Wheaton for the passing of his grandfather. I know he's a very popular teacher here.
Tonight we are going to hear a report on our IB program and on our AP exam programs. And I'd just like to point out for those who don't know, I believe Wayne is only one of four school districts in the entire Bostes area that has an IB program. Wayne, Mac, Victor, and Canandaigua. And so, the very fact that we have that program, I think says an awful lot about our academic outcomes and what we expect of our kids. And at some point going forward, as all schools experience involvement declines and after we get past some of the issues we have facing us, we may wish to extend an offer to some of the other districts in this area to participate in some way in our IB program, either formally through tuition attendance or through long distance learning. But I'm looking forward to hearing the report tonight and see how well our kids did on the IB and that AP exam.
Jim? I did attend the Free Will opening bash a couple weeks ago. And well attended, lots of fun, and teachers and staff seemed to be off to a great start.
Anybody else?
I was fortunate enough to take part in my first lockdown drill this week. And I will just say that I was shocked at how well it went and impressed with the way the staff handled it. So, I was very impressed.
All right, this time we'll ask this attendant to write your reports before.
Well, board, a couple things happening. First, start by just highlighting one of our students. Jonathan Ecker was recently highlighted in US Today, the USA Today, and also in the DNC. I think we have a little quick, little blurb that was, shows him catching one of the balls there with the team.
That was cool. Almost like that Super Bowl catch. I think he was surprised.
What was cool was that they put him up 27-26 after being behind 18 nothing. So, he could come back, come back on Sunday.
Yes, so highlighted not only in the DNC, but also on Twitter, USA Today, and lots of folks, this is getting a lot of viral attention. So, just wanted to highlight and congratulate Jonathan on the great work. Couple things, first with regard to the community focus group. So, the date is again set for October 1st, 2016, 8:30 to 2:30. We have one little change to that. We were going to be in the high school cafeteria, we're going to be in the middle school cafeteria. We're letting the community know. The reason for the change is on that day, there is a huge cheerleading activity that will be happening here in the high school and the gyms and all over. And there's going to be a lot of cheerleading happening. So, I think it'd be better to kind of have the event in a quieter space because it can get very busy. We're expecting hundreds, hundreds of kids on that day. So, I think we'd be better to do that. So, we'll let the community know, I just want to let you all know it'll be in the middle school versus the high school. You will see tonight, the CSEA negotiation piece. We have a rollover agreement that we'd like to have final approval from the board with. The rollover takes us until 2019. And approval is sought tonight for that piece. The union did go out and do a vote amongst their constituencies and they overwhelmingly said, yes, we'd like to pass this. So, tonight that is in your pocket and we do seek approval with that tonight. In terms of the calendar, so our district calendar unfortunately has a little snag on it. On March 16th, excuse me, 17th, it says that we want a half day. We really want that on the 16th. So, our regular calendar that went out to the public, the big one, the with the pictures and whatever else, that one has it listed correctly. But it's the district one that we want to make sure that we have the right date listed on. So, that was a typo or a mistake there and we would like to just amend that formally so that way it's done and the board knows that. Typically, we do parent teacher conferences on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and that's what we like to do in this case again as opposed to that Tuesday and Friday. So, that was an oversight, but we'd like to fix that formally tonight. We also have a curriculum and instruction report tonight if you want to share, as you heard Ron talk about with regard to our AP and IB results. So, we're going to have Joe come up and give those results tonight.
Sure. Okay, yep, tonight I'm going to talk to you a little bit about our academic outcomes with our international baccalaureate program and our advanced placement programs. I'll share with you some enrollment data. I have some hard copies. Is everybody able to get it on there? Everybody's got it? Anybody need a hard copy? All right. So, we'll share some enrollment data, we'll talk, we'll give you the 14-15 comparison. We'll also show you how we did it with some other comparatives. So, first I have for you some enrollment data. We're going to start with the IB program, then we'll work our way to the AP program. Just to orient you to this graph, you're going to see that left to right, it's 14-15 data, 15-16 data. And actually for enrollment, I've included this year's enrollment data for you. So, the way that you would read this graph is that in 14-15, we had 72 students, the yellow is the number of students enrolled in, and I cannot read my own graph right now, enrolled in however many classes that blue bars. So, as you work your way across, when we think about the percentage of kids enrolled in one or more IB classes, in 14-15, that number was 19% of the junior senior class was enrolled in one or more. Two years ago it was 30%, and in the current school year, we have 32% of our juniors and seniors enrolled in one or more IB classes. You'll remember that the IB program can be taken class by class like AP, or you could do the whole series, six classes, three core or subject areas, and work your way toward an IB diploma, having done the whole diploma. Or you can get individual certificates per class. We have a lot of kids taking one or more classes but not doing the full diploma. As a percent of our overall enrollment, you see that it is, it is growing. This next graph shows you the breakdown of females to males. In our IB program, really, when you look at the diploma piece of the program, it's fairly level. But girls do edge out boys and have eked out boys for the past two years. Interestingly though, in 14-15, we had 39 girls and 31 boys, but those boys took, actually took more IB classes in total than the girls. So, with gender data, it could be kind of difficult to draw those trends. But in speaking with Ryan Van Allen, it is true that, you know, a few more girls and boys each year do participate in our IB program. This is our year-to-year comparison. What you'll note is that in the IB program, there is a seven-point rubric that each assessment is given against. So, the high score you could get on any, any exam is a seven. Mr. Van Allen said that's a unicorn. You don't see any sevens. So, he described it-
Is that why the graph only goes to six?
Well, that's just scaling, yeah. That's why it only goes to six. But you see that we were hovering around fours and fives, mid-fours are our average. And as you work your way across, you could see in visual arts, we have a little bit lower results than we do in the English Lit and the, and the history exams.
Passing rate is 100%?
So, passing on, on this is difficult because when you, when you look at it, what you really want in an IB is you want to get a four to get that college credit. We don't, we don't have fours across the board, Dennis, not every kid got a four. But we measure IB and AP beyond that. So, the, so the benefit to the kids is also the experience they get in the classroom. But no, not every student achieved that four, for sure. But you could see that we're holding our own, made some progress and a little bit of regression just in the visual arts.
Joe, did you, I'm sorry, did you, did you say visual arts and HL and SL? What is the difference?
So, we have visual arts, HL, SL, higher level and standard level courses. So, higher level is higher, is more rigorous than the standard level. Kids are co-seated in that, in other words, we would be side by side, but by the end of our junior year, we would have to determine, hey, am I going after that higher level certificate? Or am I going after the standard level? There's just a little bit of different criteria. We do the same thing with biology. Biology, you'll see, we have a higher level and a standard level. And as long as students, that's co-seated, so we're side by side again, we're giving kids instruction at that higher level. But based on the requirements, students and students' interests and how they're doing, they can decide, hey, I'm going to do the, the standard level. If you go for the entire diploma, you, you have to have at least two higher level classes. So, but you can pick. So, we have a couple of places where, where you can choose.
Okay.
Does that make sense? I think this graph is really interesting because we not only get to compare ourselves to other New York schools or Western regional schools, but also to the world. And we, you know, we compare favorably in things like the English, the history. You'll see that our Spanish Abenicio, and Abenicio, you'll notice we have two Spanishes, one is Spanish AB and one is Spanish SL. And the only thing, those are two separate courses. So, if you're a student who wants to be a diploma candidate but hasn't, has not taken Spanish, then you'll, you'll take the course that's known as Abenicio, your, or your initial Spanish. If you've taken Spanish up through your junior year, then you would go ahead and take the SL because you've got a base in Spanish. That's the difference between those two courses. Any questions on that graph? The diploma is the, you know, kind of cornerstone of the program. And this next chart shows you since our inception, how many juniors were pursuing the diploma and then how many seniors actually achieved the diploma. So, this year, we currently have nine students who are pursuing the diploma. Last year, we had six students pursue it, five students got it. And you could see, you could work your way back from there. You can see that we do have, if you, if you look diagonally, we do have some erosion sometimes. So, in 2015-16, we had 12 juniors who were pursuing the diploma. And then when they got to their senior year, we have, we have nine remaining. So, that does happen. Kids do change their mind and we work with them to, to accommodate. We've had high percentages of kids that'll get the diploma. You can see the 100% down the right-hand column. I would trade that 100% for more kids going for diplomas though, quite frankly. The diploma's great, but it's not the only thing. So, I would, I would like to see us get even more kids going after that diploma. This is the breakdown by gender. The green are the juniors. So, there's only one green graph, if you will, because we can't tell you how many juniors earned the diploma. But this breaks it out by gender and you can see that we had seven kids in 14-15 and six students in 15-16, that's the blue graph, pursuing the diploma. It was five girls and two boys in 14-15, and then it was one girl and five boys in 15-16. So, the diploma piece has some gender balance and looking back, well, we have a few more girls participating in the, you know, certificate courses than boys. We did have one student this year not get it, not get the diploma, but that student even reflected and just said it's still well worth the journey and he learned and grew a great deal from it. He had a couple, you can only have so many two, level twos, and he had two, which was one too many. And it's very, it's a very complicated formula, but... So, next we look at our, our AP numbers. And we have, we have great AP numbers as well. And I think when, I shared with you that we were around 30% for IB. And we're, we're at around 25% for our AP, our AP numbers across the board. So, the, the current school year is all the way to your right. You see, we, we see that yellow line kind of spike up this year. What's interesting is that we had 23% two years ago, 20% last year, and this year we have about 25%. So, it's still, I mean, one in four kids participated in an AP class. And the way I did that is I took, I took that as a, as a function of the juniors and seniors. So, how many juniors and seniors do we have? And then how many students do we have taking AP classes? So, obviously, I used, I used the yellow number as the numerator because I wanted to look at individual kids.
Do we have no sophomores?
No, not typically. We could with acceleration, but typically the APs are at the junior senior level.
And how many do we offer?
How many APs do we offer? I'll show you in just a minute. So, then this is the breakdown between girls and boys. I don't know, this, this graph is different than the one, just that extra, those extra lines on the right. But you could just see that in this case, we have more, the girls do edge out the boys again. You know, we had 65 females in 15-16 and 39 males. And, and that holds again in 15-16. So, the females do outnumber, the males a little bit with AP. This next graph, with AP, it's scaled out of five points. Typically, what a college would like to see is a three or better. Depending on your major, depending on, you know, the college you choose, it's really up to the individual college, what they will accept and won't accept. If they're looking for a certified course, if you're going for engineering, they may not take even a four if it's an AP physics. But if you're, if you're doing something else, they may take a three for AP physics and give you, give you credit that way. So, you can see that, that we have significant, if you look at the green from two years ago to last year, you see a significant bump in our fives. The green represents the five, the scores of, perfect scores, really, the highest score you can achieve. The blues are the fours and of course, most of our, the, the bulk of our kids scoring above a three are in the three range with 45 students. And you can see the girls and boys two years ago, pretty even with, with their scores. The boys actually outperformed the girls two years ago, scoring more fours than, than the girls. But I don't really think in our AP course, gender is too much of an issue, but I hate to draw too far a conclusion again with just a couple of years up here for you to look at. Our year-to-year comparison, now Carla, this, this represents all the exams that students took. There are some up here, like if you look all the way to the right, the world history. We don't teach world history, but sometimes students will do one of a couple of things. They'll take it online, they'll challenge the exam. So, some of our IB kids challenged the AP US history two years ago. This year, or last year, we didn't offer AP history because we have Gemini history, we have IB history, and we just had low enrollment. So, when you see just one line there, the dark blue line means we did, we offered it two years ago, but we didn't have any kids take the exam last year. The light blue line sitting alone, the world history, that, and that means that we had kids take it last year but not the year before. So, we couldn't compare the two years. So, when we have singletons or when we have low enrollment, sometimes we'll offer them every couple of years. You'll see that we have English comp up there and English Lit, those are two AP. We kind of switched our order a couple of years ago. More kids wanting to take the comp than the, than the Lit, and we thought kids would do better. So, that's why in some cases you don't have a good year-to-year comparison. But across the board, we actually, where we have a comparison, we did as well or better than the year before. And then this is, this is how we compare to the world and to New York State. And what's interesting in this graph is that we outperformed them all across the board, which is pretty impressive for those six exams, the exams that we actually have courses associated with. So, the one thing that I would like to say, why advanced courses matter, you know, the, the first thing we talk about is, is to me, the last thing that matters, and that is the college credit. You know, our students, we want our students to have a rigorous and relevant high school career. We want them to be able to explore areas of interest. We want them to experience upper level, college level courses so they know that they're, what they're in for. We want to engage them in courses that they're interested in, in wanting to take. We do want to prepare them for college. And if they, if they could leave us with college credit, which most of our kids actually do these days, that's just the icing on the cake. So, I know that was fast. If there's any questions, I'll take them, otherwise, you know where I live.
We talked about expanding the IB programs of lower grades. Has anyone talked then?
So, there's, there's several levels of program. There's a middle years and then there's a primary years. And, you know, there, a few years ago, we discussed bringing it down to the primary years, particularly bringing some foreign language down as well. I'm sure if there's interest, we'll explore it further. We don't have plans tomorrow to bring IB to the, to the lower level.
Does any other school districts have lower grades?
Yes. If I can respond, yes, others do, especially in Monroe County, there are a couple districts that have lower, and other grades. And just to kind of piggyback on, so as we are starting to think about efficiencies and opportunities and we think about our strategic plan, one of the goals of the plan is to find other ways to bring more enrichment to students. So, that's one of the things that we'll, we'll think about. You know, is that a, a program that we might be able to expand into earlier grades? So, it is something that, please know that we are thinking about and, and there is some interest in that. And we'll come back as we begin to think about efficiencies and think about our strategic plan. Those are things that we'll be thinking about. But yes, Dennis, to answer your question, there are several districts that do have IB programs in the earlier grades, yes. There are several of them actually close by to us who do.
The last graph, Joe, showing our IB scores and showing that we're outperforming New York State and outperforming the world, is particularly impressive given the fact that our percentage of kids trying the AP is increasing, which says to me that, that, you know, we're encouraging kids to take more demanding courses and that, that our instructional technology and our instructional expertise is getting better because we're getting that, that not-so-certain student to challenge and to do well on, on the AP. So, that, that's very impressive.
Thank you.
I agree.
Thank you, Joe. I appreciate it. Okay, so I'm going to ask Greg and Lafferty, if they can join us now for just a quick minute? We'll start first with Greg tonight now. He's running here at the table. I just want to share, in our last meeting, we talked a little bit about a tax roll matter that has come up. And Greg's back from his honeymoon, back to the world, world of work. But we're having fun, so we're going to talk a little bit about the tax roll piece. We kind of want to just share the history and background. We're heading, please.
So, the board at the, I believe it was the August 11th meeting, set the tax rate based on the taxable information we've received from the county. And when they did the proofing, their overturning of the tax bills, they found that we were out of balance by $10,000 and that ended up being attributable to an Ontario property. There was a miscoding on something and it changed the taxable value for Ontario by $10,000. So, by adjusting the taxable value for Ontario, it had the impact, changed the, I believe, all of Wayne County towns' tax rates. The tax rates go out six decimal places. The impact was small. It changed the last three decimal places of the tax rates, but it did change it from what the board had approved before. So, we made the correction so when the bills went out, they would be correct. But we wanted to bring the correct information back to the board just so that you're aware and have you approve the revised number.
So, was the $10,000 in favor of the homeowners or, I mean, how, how did it affect the $100,000?
The-
The corporate number?
I think so.
It went-
It probably sounds like tax.
Probably two cents, five cents.
It actually went up. A tax rate went up by-
Tax cents?
Uh, no, no, just, like I said, the tax rate is, so the old tax rate for Ontario was $20, 20.282488. The revised was 20.282686. So, and that was uniform across three out of the four Wayne County towns because they're at 100%. Williamson's at 99, so that change was a little different.
About 10 cents?
Yeah, yeah, about 10 cents, yes. Sorry, yes, correct. I thought you meant 10 cents on the rate.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, 10 cents on the bill, yes, that's, yes, sorry, didn't understand, but-
So, that's where the zero, eight cents came on my tax bill.
Yes, yes. So, we just wanted to bring that back to you. I mean, we, because of the timing, we had to make the correction so that the bills would be sent out on time and be accurate. But we wanted to come back to you since the information had changed and just share the change with you and have you guys approve the amended tax roll number.
Greg, where are we collecting taxes this month?
We are collecting at the town of Ontario. This is our third year that they've been generous enough to allow us to do that. It's actually worked out very well. I think their setup is better than ours because ours, there was always a conflict with the bus traffic. When she was here, she shared an office with accounts payable. And so, we did the change the first time, I think, when we were under the renovation. And then when we came back, there really wasn't appropriate space and they were gracious enough to allow her to stay. But, you know, the parking there is much more convenient, it's separately located. So, I think it's worked out very well and the town's been gracious enough to allow us to continue to do that in the spirit of sharing.
And it also counts as a shared service for the town?
Um, I'm not sure, Ron, because there's, there's not enough financial implication, but, I, I mean, we would obviously try to claim it as that under the, but there's not a huge financial impact for us. But it just, it's just much more convenient for the, for our taxpayers that they choose to pay in person, which believe it or not, there's still a few.
Well, I would think if we have that many people who have older, we have a lot of senior citizens who are, have no children in the district whose homes are probably paid for, not in escrow. So, I can see where that would be a definite possibility.
And Carla, you're right, typically the majority of the people that come in do tend to be older people. Why not have a checking account, come in with cash, just-
Well, the home is paid for.
The home is paid for, correct. And that's-
Excuse me, I went to pay mine next year. Do you think we could see if she'll do a changing time? Because it's only, she only accepts from 10 to 2. So, my wife and I like to pay cash and there's no way I can get that.
We do, Jeremy, at the end of the, the last three days of the month before the penalty phase, we do expand the hours till four or five. I'd have to look back and see, but that was something we did a couple of years ago.
It wasn't on the sign of the day. I was just curious.
Yeah, it's on the legal notice and it's, it should be on the, the actual tax bill itself saying on those certain days, the hours are expanded because most people will wait till, I mean, why not wait till the last day? You know, why give that money up before you have to? So, the business picks up on those last three days. And we do the same thing in October because that's the second part of the collection period.
We'll start to look at hours for the future and talk to the folks about the hours.
Right.
Can you take it on a charge card? I know Towne Walworth has changed that with their town taxes.
Currently, we do not. And Dennis, I'm not sure if that's something that the state has to change. I don't know if we are so-
You do have to pay the percentage though, that you get charged.
Right, right.
Yeah, I'm just thinking maybe some type of percentage.
Yeah, same thing like they don't, currently they don't allow- Yeah, same thing, like they don't, currently, they don't allow installments. I'm not exactly sure why, but, you know, those are state rules that we have to follow. But we've had quite a few people that would have requested to be able to pay installments and for whatever. I don't know what the state's wisdom is, or if there is any, but they don't allow us to do that currently.
Okay, any other questions on the tax rule? We, okay, all right, so we want to shift a little bit to do a lead testing update. So just within this month, there have been some changes to the legislation that some of us were thinking were going to come. The governor has signed some new legislation in place, and, and kind of moved a little bit faster than what some of us thought would, would occur. And basically, what they've said is that, you know, they want to now have us all do some testing with, with pretty much every water source, where there could potentially be some drinking water that kids would use. This would include drinking fountains in the bathrooms. So they have, they are suggesting it, they're not requiring it, but it's strongly suggested because kids sometimes take their water bottles, put them under the sink, or you always have a kid who takes their hand and kind of does that in the sink. So the governor's come out on September sixth and said, hey, listen, putting out this new legislation, all these things should be tested by September thirtieth. So that's three weeks later, and all the districts are going, what's happening, right? And then he's done some things where he said, you know, the Department of Health will be the, the folks will be responsible for this, and you'll work closely with them. But when we call Department of Health, they're, they're kind of like, what are you talking about? We haven't even heard of all this yet. So kind of just happened fast out of the blue. We are, and have been, as you know, ahead of the game. We've done a lot of testing, but now what it looks like we're gonna need to do is, if we want to be really proactive, is go back and look now at every one of the bathroom sinks. So we've done all the faucets where the kids drink from, the hallway faucets, classroom faucets. Now, it's the, the drinking, the sinks that they use to wash their hands with. And so we're gonna try to go back, like other districts, and I think it's okay. I think we should be proactive and do this, and we're gonna test. That's, that's about, we kind of tried to estimate maybe at least six hundred sites. And for us, right now, it's, it's about eight or nine bucks, no more than eight or nine bucks a site. So we're talking about, you know, thirty-five hundred dollars to get this done. It's one of those unfunded mandates, but you gotta do what you gotta do. We do want to make sure the kids are safe. But wanted to share that with you because this just came out. And again, the deadline to have this done is September thirtieth. So districts are really working hard to try to get this done, order to get a waiver. Bob, you want to share, I've kind of summarized, what, what do you think?
Sure, September thirtieth for K, K through five buildings, which would be OP, Freewill, and NOE. And we have till October thirty-first to do the high school and the middle school. But all of the testing we've done prior will, will be okay. We have to get a waiver. Nobody knows where that waiver is and who we should talk to. I've been on the phone good part of yesterday and today. Every district's in the same boat, and so there's nothing, the state wasn't ready for this legislation when they passed it. So, so we're, we're scrambling and trying to, we want to, we want to be compliant. You know, we were kind of on the cutting edge, and then we're, now we find out we have to go back. I, I did a webinar last Friday, I'm gonna do another one tomorrow, that's gonna be run by the State Education Department and the Department of Health. Problem is, there's too many, there's three agencies we have to report to. State Education, local Department of Health, which in our case is in Geneva, for Yates, Ontario, and Wayne Counties. And the school nurse supposedly has access to that, to that website, although I haven't been able to find one of our nurses that know anything about that. So, you know, we're kind of in the dark, we're, we're doing our best to comply by the dates that they, that they gave us. And we're gonna, we're gonna try to be, do the best we can for kids.
I was just seeing here that it says outside hose connections. Why would that need to be...
They're, they're thinking for like...
Start the key besides, you can't just turn them on.
Some of them do, but sometimes they hook up like the football water station from a, from a spigot. And so the spigot will be on, and it'll be a hose connection, and then it'll be a separate, some, some way or other to turn the water on, actually. So very rarely...
So there's actually costs after that that you have no control over.
Right, and then there's no real guidance as, okay, my colleague at Palmech, they did all their bathroom sinks. Okay, what do we do when they come back high? We can put, you know, there's gonna be signage that say, for hand washing only, you know, no drinking the water, but do we remediate that? They haven't, they just said guidance forthcoming, so...
So, so the question is, you know, again, with the bathrooms, like if you get one that has a high reading, you know, do you just put a sign? They've kind of said in their webinars, you can put a sign, this is no drinking water, right? But kids are there still. So do you remediate it or not, right? So in a nutshell, districts, all of us are in the same boat now. So some people, by the way, haven't tested anything. We did a lot of testing last year. We were down to one site, and, and then the rug gets pulled out from under you. So we are, just so you know, we are now in the process of reaching out to our folks who came in. We have an outside vendor we've been working with. We think that's a good practice to have, an extra set of eyes and ears on it. And we'll be reaching out. Bob and I were talking today, and getting some, some testing done here, and then going from there. And just so you know, in the, the future, there's been, you know, talk about, you know, who can do your testing? So you can always get an outside vendor, you can do your tests yourself, right? Or you can, you know, look for other sources, like share with other people. So we're gonna be thinking that through a little bit as well, too. The regs do allow you to do your own testing. The only thing with that is some districts are concerned because they will, you know, by some communities, that could be looked at as not a neutral third party. So we're, we're thinking a lot on that.
Could you do something like a poster with...
It's, it's a good question.
With the other schools, you know, like they all get together and have one guy do them all?
Right, so our BOSIs that we work with, GB BOSIs has a service that they're kind of creating around this. It's, it's a big thing now with all the districts over the last couple of months. So I think that those posters might be coming out soon. I think we'll see something like that, especially if schools are gonna be required to do this, this piece now on an ongoing basis.
And you haven't said anything about the showers yet?
No, or...
No, we're not, we're not, no karma here, please don't bring it.
The good thing is showers, they said, are exempt. Slop sinks, because, you know, like custodial closet can be locked, that's exempt. But, you know, to be honest, they're, they're correct. You know, kid, we all know kids are gonna go in and stick their cup or whatever under the bathroom sink at some point, so, you know, it should be done. So we're gonna go back and do it.
Well, and our football program's a good example. They actually run a hose from behind the high school. There's a spigot, the hose, they run it out to the practice field, and it connects to something that's got like six different lines, so it allows like six or seven players at one time to get a drink. And I, I would assume, I don't know if the soccer team has the same thing, but it would kind of make sense that, you know, that they would do that, so... And then in, in the bathrooms here, I mean, you got three, just in the boys room here, you got three sinks. They don't have individual shut-offs like at your house, or like in an elementary building. So if you had one that was a problem, right now it's just signage. The other alternative would be to shut all the water off, which that's not a good alternative either, so...
Yeah, the good thing is we can't turn them back on if they, if they're not, if they're not compliant, if we use them for hand washing with signage, until they tell us how to remediate, so...
So you brought up something that I'm curious about now. Who's in charge of making sure that that's sanitary for the, for the football?
Yeah, is it a water-only?
Well, that'll be one of the, that'll be something that'll be tested now under this lakes piece.
It's not sanitary, not, this is sucker for blood, this is like biologically safe.
Oh, you mean how they do it?
Yeah, to the green homes, is it drinking homes?
Something that, something that we can look at and find out.
It's a machine they have in it.
Actually, the, the machine that we have here is, is one that they purchased through a sporting good, like, uh, like a R A D bottle. The one we had from the district I came from was homemade, so that's what you gotta watch out for, you know, stuff like that.
Well, it's the hose.
We'll check into that, though.
But I just had a question for Bob. Do we have any of those, the new drinking fountain with the place to fill your sports bottle fountains, too?
That's a great question. We're thinking about looking into those, with, especially with all this going on, where we have to, if we have to remediate a, a fountain. They're, the only issue is they're kind of pricey, so that's why we haven't kind of updated to those. But they, I think it's a great option.
Not saying like throughout the whole building, but maybe in the more...
Maybe a few key ones, right?
Maybe the cafeteria and the, and the athletic area. I know they do fill pretty fast.
Yeah, they're great, I, I've used them before, too. I think they're really wonderful, especially, everybody's got a water bottle, so...
Well, I just think it's more sanitary than filling at work, it's washed everywhere.
So that's where we're at with lead testing. We'll be back to be continued. We'll come back with more. But we wanted to share because there's some deadlines out there. September thirtieth is when it needs to be done by. So if we can't get it all done by then, we'll be seeking a waiver from the state. We want to make sure that you know that. And we'll continue to do pretty much like everybody else is doing. Get it, we'll, we'll get it done, we'll get ourselves where we need to be too. Okay?
All right, do we have any vacation slides?
Uh, no, that, the travel log is forthcoming.
Okay, so board, that's all we have for you tonight, and we're good with it?
All right, now we'll move through the board action items we have listed on the agenda. Start off with need a motion to further approval of the evaluators. Pam, second, Carla, is there any discussion? All in favor? Any votes? Thank you. Second one, need a motion to approve the first reading for policy sixteen eleven, thirty-two ten, thirty-two twenty, sixty-two fifteen, and seventy-six sixty. Carrie, second, Ron, any discussion?
Yeah, I just had a question. It, it appears that most of that looked to be like more or less state-driven, or driven by Erie BOSIs, not something that we're choosing to amend, okay?
Yeah, that's right, you missed last meeting. So that's why I said all the changes on there have been recommended by the state through Erie BOSIs, just to keep us prepared.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor? Any votes? Third, we have need a motion to approve the taxable revision. Carrie, second, man, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. All right, last one, need a motion to approve the C S E A contract. Carla, still second, any discussion? All in favor? Any votes? All right, next, we'll approve the motion to approve the consent agenda. Ron, and still second, any discussion? If I can, do you want to share on the consent?
We're doing this, I said.
Okay. All in favor? Any votes? Committee report, communications, Mary?
Yep, excuse me, we met tonight at five-thirty here in the district office. After a discussion and looking at how things have been going with the committee, we have decided as a group that we're gonna step back, not disband, but we're gonna hold ourselves off for a while because we feel that district office is communicating everything that we think to communicate. They're a step ahead of us anyhow. So we're gonna hold back unless we're needed again. So we're gonna, I think we decided we're gonna take the next three, four months off, and we'll discuss whether we need to meet at that point.
Right, committee, man?
Yeah, we met last Thursday, went over the claims auditors' report, no significant findings, and briefly, briefly went over the extra classroom auditors' report. She wasn't there, she'll attend our next meeting, which is October thirteenth, five-thirty into this room.
Carrie, Paul?
Our next meeting is Thursday, October sixth, scheduled at five. Originally, we had that scheduled just to kind of coincide with policy and communications back to back. So if we as a committee want to maybe talk about maybe moving it a little bit later, so moving forward. Yeah, we all send a email out, just to kind of discuss, maybe know later, starting, I don't know.
All right, board president comment? Um, I just like to think it was pretty good that we have a culture now that our C S E A would come to us and look to feel comfortable asking if they could do something with their contract or wait till they rush out, things like that, and we worked with them to approve the addition. So I thought that would start with that. All right, we will be journeying, journey will be, it's not gonna be able to come back for executive session later on after the Board of Education and Communication workshop with the Kane Architects and the Formia Artists. We don't anticipate any action after that, so we will journey a long time from now.